Okay, we're calling meetings order. We'll start out with the flag of leaders. Flag of leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have to thank everyone for coming this evening. Marty, I'm just curious as to, is there a record time on council meetings?
I have one twelve and a half minutes.
Oh, you did?
But hey, that's, I don't want you to look at that as a bar.
Monty, hi.
We won't make that today. Is there anyone here who would like to step forward with any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three. And joining us from Rise VT is Jess Frost. Jess, we're gonna sit here. Thank you for joining us tonight. Jess had reached out to me during the summer about Rise VT and their, where we stand relative to the city's report card in terms of fitness and health. So Jess, a full assurance.
Thank you.
Is this a test, Jess?
No, we already passed. So we, Rise Vermont, just to give you a little background, we work with schools, municipalities, businesses, and individuals. So we meet with all the municipalities in Franklin County and we go through our scorecard. So I'm very pleased to say that the city is one of two gold municipalities. The other one, I think, is Swanton Village. But we have a list of best practices for municipal planning. A lot of them are having smoke-free signage in the parks. Some of it connects back to your town plan language, that you're always looking to improve connectivity between the town, really emphasizing making it pedestrian-friendly, and also planning for recreational areas. And then things like the thriving farmer's market comes into play as well. Just looking for some other highlights. So all of the sidewalk work that you guys have been doing, and our Route 7 project that the city and town have been partnering on to connect the city and the town. So I wanted to bring you a copy of the scorecard, just so you could look through it and see pretty much, almost every item is ticked off for the city, which is huge. And as a result of that, you get a certificate saying that you're a gold municipality. So I was wondering if I could present it and also take a photo. Because we love our photos.
You may take a photo for you while you present it.
You don't pay him?
Sure.
Do I have a minute?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Everybody, I bet you're not just the big guys here.
I'll let you guys decide.
You're bigger than I am.
Where should we be?
This is the mayor's office.
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 Everyone shy.
All right, that'll be the mayor.
We'll get to it by the way.
This chair is...
Roll your window, girl.
Thank you very much.
All right, now say, let's pile you with a rock star.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll add a couple of questions, actually. Who do you work with mainly in the city? Is there one?
Chip. Chip and I met and went through the whole scorecard. And then I know he had a follow-up meeting with Amy Moore, Moore Department, too.
And so there's a couple of recommendations here as well as how to move forward on the next level, you said?
Yeah, I mean, haven't come up with a platinum level yet, but if you get all the gold ticked off, that could be a possibility. So one of them is reducing the visibility of alcohol and tobacco products and advertisements throughout content neutral policy and there are zoning changes. So that can be, you know, like in areas around the schools, like BFA, there's the market across the street where there's alcohol and tobacco advertised. So some municipalities choose to restrict that, so it's not by the schools. And the second one is determining the role and frequency of alcohol at family-focused events, listing and promoting alcohol-free events. So just being able to create a culture where if there's a family event going on, there's not alcohol always there, so that we're showing the kids, we can run a 5K without drinking a beer sometimes, or we can go to an event and not always drink something, especially as communities tend to be struggling with addiction issues. It's just nice to have that positive message out there. Not that everything has to be alcohol-free. We love to support the local businesses as well, but picking a few to highlight.
And I know you're in the city school. Can you touch briefly on some of the initiatives with the city school?
Yes. So city school is also one of our few gold schools because of all that they do with their physical activity. I think they're one of the few schools that has 30-minute recess across the board for most of the students. I'm kind of reaching back a little bit, because I haven't looked at it in a while. They also have a, I think last year there were three gold classrooms, and this year we've already had more interest at city school of teachers coming on board with the classroom program. But they were one of the early adapters and really have paved the way for a lot of the school.
And you've also, you've done surveys with weights and heights and all that to track.
Yeah. That wasn't broken down by school, though. It was broken down by school district. And I don't have the number in front of me. I think the average overweight and obese was around 40% for Maple Run, but I'd have to look back to verify that. So we'll do that again next year, every two years, to try to just get some baseline data and see if we're making changes.
Well, I think I asked all the questions to make my wife happy, so I'll...
Next, we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jess, anytime.
Next item on the agenda is, as a community, we're very fortunate to have some very strong businesses in the community, to the point where two of them have reached the 100-year milestone, both instrumental in St. Albans and the history of St. Albans. The first one I'd like to ask to come up for a mayor proclamation, thank you, would be Heale Funeral Home. Brett, if you want to come forth with any of your, I know you have many of your employees here, and thank you all for coming. So recognizing 100 years of business in Franklin County, whereas, sorry, I'm new to this job. Whereas the Heale family initially operated a delivery service providing horse-drawn purses and hacks, also known as taxis, to several area funeral homes, and whereas in 1918, upon the demands of the community, the Heale Funeral Home was established by Winslow D. and Lottie Bliss Heale. And whereas upon the untimely death of Winslow D. Heale, a son, Raymond W. Heale, continued the operation of the funeral home and was succeeded by two of his sons, Howard G. Bud Heale and Winslow R. Win Heale. And whereas today, the Heale family tradition is continued by Raymond Brett Heale, the son of Howard Bud Heale and Margaret Teck Heale, along with Brett's wife Emily, who's with us today, the daughter of Clint and Pauline Taqulin. Whereas the Heale Funeral Home has been continuously owned and operated for 100 years by four generations of the Heale family. And whereas the Heale Funeral Home remains committed to serving the residents of Franklin County with dignity, compassion, and honor. And whereas the Heale Funeral Home is committed to providing personalized memorial tributes to the families in our community during their most difficult time of loss. And whereas the Heale Funeral Home has provided compassionate service to the families of our community during their time of loss. Now therefore, I, Tim Smith, Mayor of St. Albans City, do hereby congratulate and express appreciation to the Heale Funeral Home for their 100th year of continuous service to the families of Franklin County, given under my hand and the seal of St. Albans, the City of St. Albans, on this eighth day of October. Well, thank you, Brett. I've shared with Brett over the years, I've had to attend funerals outside of the state for aunts, uncles, cousins, whatever the case is. And I've always been amazed at how spoiled we've been in St. Albans, the way Brett and his staff treat family, people visiting the funeral home. It's that compassion, that care, that attention to detail, just is not there at these in other states, even in communities that are same size. They just cannot match up to that level of service that Brett and his staff does. And, you know, I know it's more, I know you're gonna pass it on, but it's more than just you, it's the staff has been outstanding over the years. And it's, it's hard to go in many times, but you make the people, you know, coming to pay tribute comfortable.
I have to thank them, because if it wasn't for my staff and associates, we wouldn't be here 100 years.
What are you trained in?
Thank you.
I got the right one now. Mr. Birkin, would you like to come up? So recognizing 100 years of business in Franklin County, whereas the St. Albans Creamery is celebrating its 100th year with the conclusion of its 100th annual meeting in February, thanks to the strong support and commitment of its dairy farmer members. And whereas 100 years ago, a group of dairy farmers in Franklin County, Vermont, had a vision to form a cooperative to sell their milk. And whereas, membership of the co-op cooperative grew over the following decades, as did the cooperative operations. And whereas, a membership expanded to well beyond the borders of Franklin County and now reaches into other states. And whereas, under the guidance of the St. Albans Cooperative Board of Directors, the cooperative has steadily grown and now markets over 140 million gallons. And whereas, the St. Albans Cooperative has been an integral part of the region's overall strength in the agricultural sector. And whereas, the presence of the St. Albans Cooperative Creamery has been instrumental in attracting value-added food manufacturing to the region, creating countless jobs. And whereas, the strength and support of the membership has been critical in St. Albans' cooperative's success. And whereas, the St. Albans Cooperative Creamery has been instrumental in the revival of the St. Albans City. Now therefore, I, Tim Smith, Mayor of the St. Albans City, do hereby congratulate and express appreciation to the St. Albans Cooperative Creamery for their 100th year of business in Franklin County, given under my hand and the seal of the City of St. Albans on this eighth day of October 2018. So we've done a number of things to honor the, not just the co-op, but the I community. Many of you know the I community is in a tough time. And we, Dom, myself, the council, Marty, and the rest of the staff, just thought it was important that we, as a community, for which the co-op has been home for 100 years, and I would share that it hasn't been the ideal home. I mean, it's growth, growth has affected, you know, the limitations of the co-op, yet they still remain a valuable business and community, and we try to, we wanted to recognize that this year with the photo contest that we did. There's soon to be a cow out front here that...
It's done. It'll be here this week.
Okay, so Kirsten Boujwa tracked that down and purchased it someplace.
She purchased it.
Marty brought it to John Young. It's gonna be painted, and we'll have it out front so people can take pictures, just to honor the dairy farmers and what they've done to this community over the years. So, Leo, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to share anything?
Yes, if I can. I don't want my bag to Dom, but again, I want to certainly thank the City of St. Albans, Tim, and really this entire community for the support that you've provided the State Albans Cooperative over the last 100 years. We have certainly, again, seen changes within our city and within our industry over that 100 years. And I can remember started going to the cooperative back in the 60s, when my parents were members of the cooperative. And we can certainly attest that things have changed on Federal Street over that 100 years. And again, that wouldn't have been possible without really the support of this community, the support of the city, because again, that has allowed us to continue to grow and to process more milk today than we've ever had. And so, again, we recognize the importance that, again, in order to be successful, the community needs to be there, and they were certainly supportive, especially in our recent growth and the expansion of our footprint here in the City of St. Albans. We still certainly recognize also the truck traffic that we bring in and out of the city each and every day. But again, when we look at those cows, there's certainly been economic engines, you know, for all of us in Franklin County. Today, Franklin County still supports somewhere around 130 dairy farmer families here, right here in Franklin County. And so, again, it's been a privilege for me to work with dairy farmers, but also it's a privilege to work with, again, the caliber of people, not only here in Franklin County, but across the state and country as it relates to agriculture. So again, thank you for the support the city has provided as we celebrate our 100th year. Again, we really appreciate it, and certainly will share that with the board at our future meeting. So thank you.
Next on the agenda is the continued emergency ordinance regarding truck traffic. Thank you all. Thank you, Brett. Truck traffic on Upper Wildon Street.
So our emergency ordinance is limited to 30 days. We're coming up on that. So we put this on, so the council, we want to keep it going for a little bit.
Yes, please.
Have you noticed any difference?
Yeah, there has, it seems like there has been a difference. Of course, our sidewalk work started as well, so that may be also affecting things, but it really has been better, so hopeful.
So, Marty?
So there was a truck that quickly down the other side stopped across Consulting, and Peter actually talked to him, and he was going to Berry Calibol via GPS.
So it was his GPS?
Is sending them down, for whatever reason, sending them down that street.
So just to update those in the audience, many trucks, I think Mrs. Wenda on Upper Wildon came in one day with, she recorded about 13 that she had seen coming down Upper Wildon and accessing Mylan, the co-op, or the industrial park. We're not sure all of them. I've also received other emails when people see trucks on Upper Wildon. So what the initiative that we have taken, both in light capacity here and as Director of STIC, is we have drafted a letter that we'll be sharing with all of the industries with a color recommended map that they can share with drivers, in hopes that we can get past the GPS thing. The letter is being signed by myself, Dominic for the city, and Kerry Johnson for the town, because there's been an issue also on Mason Street as well, trucks going the wrong way there on Mason, accessing the industrial park. So what we're hoping to do is get this letter to all of them to share with their drivers in hopes that they'll change their ways and hopefully disregard the GPS and adapt their travels accordingly.
This particular driver had never been there before, so it was his first trip. So we're gonna have to figure out a way to get the GPS changed.
So the emergency ordinance that was established with a month on, it basically gave the police reason to pull them over. There does have fine capabilities within them, but that is not our first priority. Our first priority was to at least have a chance to have a conversation with those drivers, so that we could determine, to exactly Marty's point, how are they ending up on Upper Wildon, and trying to discourage that fact moving forward.
And they have stopped several trucks to eat nuts.
Yeah, and that was gonna be my question. Did we get a, I should have asked, did we get a report in the area as to findings of any of those stops?
Yeah, the, let's work on that for next time. So I suspect there's gotta be something built into the algorithm that detects the stoplight at the bottom a little bit. It's the only thing that makes sense. I don't know how, you know?
So the thinking is that it's too difficult to get off from the interstate access road and take a left to the industrial park, because traffic is so heavy and depending on time of day, what schools, what schools starting or ending, trucks are having a hard time. But if they come to the bottom of Wildon, there's a street light or a stoplight which allows them to do that. So that's sort of the thinking we have.
The time it takes to get off the interstate, go right through that light, and then turn left and go through all that, I don't know how many stop signs are going down that street.
Four.
Or, it just doesn't seem like that's...
I agree.
I mean, if someone knows the area, it doesn't make sense, if they're going by the GPS.
What is the possibility, or is there one, in the future about putting a light at the bottom of the interstate access road, Main Street? To me, that would make sense.
I think we're getting to that point.
I think we need to.
I don't know what the process is.
Four boats. You can do it every time.
To put a light at the bottom of the interstate access?
How much is that gonna cost?
Even though you're dealing with two state roads?
It's Class 1. I mean, it's part of the permit for the Federal Street, in a little connector, you know, so I mean, there's just some coordinating with V-Trans, but it's council perfect.
I mean, is that's one of the problems, the difficulty with going, turning a lot of that access road in a light, I think a light would help that situation.
Lights aren't cheap, you know?
No, I know.
Probably $300 grand.
Traffic in that area can be terrible when schools is coming in and going out.
That's the problem. It's probably, you're talking two hours a day is the issue, probably an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon.
I mean, we...
It's really bad. Can you explore that a little bit, and we'll float back next meeting?
Yeah, I don't know if I can get back next meeting, but we can start.
If it would benefit, then perhaps it would be an idea to approach the towns, see if they contribute some toward that way as well.
I'll get that done by the next meeting, too.
Mr. Birkin, do you have any thoughts on that situation, since this does affect the co-op in some form?
Well, that would my question whether any of our trucks...
I'd never say about that.
Never. Never. Never imagined it, but again, it's important to know, but I think all of us, again, can share that with, you know, again, any of the truck drivers, anybody that's receiving or shipment of goods, to certainly can get that message out. So I think having a preferred route out to all the industry, I think we can certainly support the city's efforts.
It's industrial park traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on Mylan, it's on Mylan.
Yeah.
So my only comment on that little map is there's nothing going up Pine Street and across Pearl for the Blackway Building.
The old mill?
Yeah. That used to be a heavy hitter with trucks, I don't know if it still is.
I've had one person complain that there's an awful lot of traffic on Pearl Street being residential and truck traffic, and I think it's coming from the old mill.
Well, you gotta get there one way or another.
Yeah.
I think they've got a designated truck route that they use.
Most of them do go Pine, Pearl.
Right.
Get the big, yeah, get the big swings for...
And head down. I think it drives them up to prevent them from going all night.
Yeah, they can't go all night.
If they're signing, they seem to adhere to that pretty well.
Anyway, may I move that the council adopt the, or continue the emergency ordinance limiting truck traffic on Upper Wildon Street?
Second.
Second by Kate. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all of the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Tom, I'll turn it over to you to consider adoption of certificate of project completion for the sidewalks. Leo, thank you.
Thank you.
Kirsten, thank you.
Thanks again. This is part of what is called post issuance compliance for our bonds. I think that not fully complete necessarily, it's subject to complete council, supposed to adopt essentially the certificate. You have, under, when you issued that, you have a certain amount of time to spend it, and this is related to, in essence, I R R requirements. We're nowhere near the time limit, but we're essentially completing the project. We'll be back a few more times with projects in the works.
That's why I said year one on this, obviously.
Yeah. We'll have a year or two done, and another month or two will be in front of you again.
And will we adopt the certificate of project completion for the sidewalks for year one?
Sidewalk.
Motion by Chad. Second by James. Any further discussion? All of the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Motion passes. Nick, Tom?
Are you honest to sign one of these things, or to use my copies?
Next on the agenda, first reading proposed permitting fees, changes, excuse me, changes to the permitting fees. Mr. Chip Sawyer.
Thank you.
Move the extra ordinary.
Oh, thanks. Takes one to know one, Tim. At least you got to walk around. I just had to sit at Kristen's desk and pretend it was working.
Just to recap, Chip and I were extras on the movie film.
Normally, I'm sitting at my desk and pretending I'm there.
When I do, I must be, you're doing your movies.
When I told Chip, I thought he embellished his typing skills.
He drove pretty fast, wasn't he, Wes?
Right. Thanks, everyone. It's been at least six years since we've updated our permitting fees. You know, the basis of the permitting fees is so that some of the cost of actually doing the permitting, certainly from the city staff standpoint, isn't all borne by the taxpayers and the general fund, and that those seeking permits and those needing certain certifications are the ones who bear a great majority of those costs. We normally budget $30,000 a year in permitting fees, and we normally hit that number, give or take, a couple thousand. I'm sure it doesn't pay for everything associated with Dave and Tammy's time and my time in that office, but it's a significant chunk, and I think it serves an important principle. So we, we have been looking at grounds for doing a general comprehensive update of the permitting fees. We do know that they're lower than in other comparable municipalities, but I thought that we would just take out, take out a piece of it, an address a piece of the permitting fees that I think are most in need of an update or an addition at this point, and then see how the council likes that, and then we can go into doing more of a comprehensive update in the future, if you'd like. But one of the things at the beginning of the memo is, there's a very discreet cost item that is not currently covered by our permitting fee, and that is the certified mailing. Say, say, Tim, you have a site plan that needs to go before the development review board. Under state statute, the warning of that upcoming DRB hearing, a certified mailing of that would have to go out to each one of your neighbors. And you add a couple different cards to the envelope. It's a pretty interesting and somewhat outdated medieval procedure, but we're still required to do it. By the time we're done with that, the postage on that one envelope is $6.67. But right now, our fees list the cost per butter at $5, so we're actually losing money on that. So my first proposal is that we increase that to $7, which is a round number, which makes it easier for both the applicant and staff to just add things up and say, this is your fee. It would accommodate any future USPS cost increases for a few years, and, you know, you know, rounding it up also recognizes the, a little bit of the time that staff put into stuffing all those envelopes and filling out the forms. The next thing I'm suggesting is that we remove the set fees for providing copies of our land development regulations. of our land development regulations and our zoning maps to the public. Right now, we charge you twenty dollars for, um, hard copies of the regs, five dollars for a copy of, of a land use map. We can provide these copies at much less of a cost than that. I think that's an old number that needs to come off, because quite frankly, if someone comes into the office and wants a, a hard copy of something, we just give it to them. And if someone wants a huge, if someone wants a big job, then we'll, we'll just use, uh, the same, uh, copier rate that Curry uses in the city clerk's office, you know. But I don't think we need to be, to say that every time we give someone a, a copy of the land use map, we have to waive a five dollar fee. So I think that I'm proposing to remove those fees. I checked with the administration before, before tonight. Our per page copy costs right now, even for color, um, are very, very low these days. So I think we can remove those fees. I'd like to clarify the policy for charging five hundred dollars for considering a change to the regulations. Now, this is a common fee amongst municipalities, and basically what it's saying is that if you have a project on one property in the community, and you'd like us to consider changing the zoning for some reason for your project, then, you know, you pay for it, applicant, because, you know, our staff and our boards are gonna have to go through the process of considering everything, going through all the motions of the hearings and, and everything like that. So there's a basis for that fee, and our five hundred dollar charge is, is comparable with other communities. But there's another side to this story, because sometimes we've had people come in and say, hey, have you considered this, or have you considered that? And when we get into it, we realize that's actually the, the direction the city wants to go in this case. So now this person is kind of, um, helping us implement the city plan, and yet we're charging them for it. And that's, I don't think that's right. So, um, what I've done is I've added a sentence or two to the footnote that describes our, um, rezoning for a project fee. It basically says, "The planning commission can waive this fee if it feels that the suggestion is something that, um, would otherwise implement the city plan." And therefore has, you know, has an effect and a benefit that's much greater than just that project. And then, um, there's one other thing that I didn't include in my memo, that, before I get to the final, final point of my memo, but that's just way at the bottom, the final line of the fee schedule, which you'll find at the top of the fourth page up in your packet here. I've deleted the reference to the ten dollar recording fee, and I just said, "A recording fee as set by state statute and the city clerk may be applicable for all permits." Because the city doesn't set that recording fee, the state does. So I figured we would leave it open, so that if it's ever updated by the state, we can just immediately, um, we, we wouldn't have a, a contradictory statement in our, in our fee schedule.
So that fee is consistent across every town?
Uh, more or less, I believe so, yeah. There might be some permutations that clerks can add to it that I'm unaware of, but the recording fee is, is set in state statute. So the final, um, piece and, and the, uh, the new addition to the fee schedule has to do with going back to that principle of the fact that those who apply for services in the permitting office should bear some of the costs of what we do in there, and it shouldn't all be borne by the, the taxpayers and the general fund. We, um, you know, I think we've let the city council know in the past that we are looking into implementing a digital record system for properties, for permitting, assessing, inspections, and other types of records. So we would have, um, the ability to pull up just digitally all the different types of records that have to go with, with each, you know, any property in the city. It would be a, a digital copy of what's in all of those folders in the vault for permitting. Problem with our current system is that it's all based on paper. Um, we do scan things, but there's nothing that organizes everything we've scanned the way that a customized program could. And in those folders, uh, pieces of paper can get lost, things can be filed out of sequence, it can be hard every time to come up with what was the sequence of permitting on a property, because you have to reorder everything phonologically and assemble a lot of paper. Um, and there's the possibility that we actually might lose some important documents just because they get misfiled or they walk away. Having digital redundancy, um, as a backup of all those important documents, but also being able to quickly, with a click of a button, see, you know, just in a line, everything that's happened on this property, what's its current permitted status? You know, where do we go from here based on what they'd like to do today? It would help our staff, applicants, any other people doing research. Um, it'll also help us do more to bring together all the synergies of assessing and building inspections and permitting, the P H S O, you know, we've been doing a really good job with that, um, on a staff, on the staff side. Um, but this CitizenServe product, it's called, would sort of backstop that digitally as a, sort of a set of records. So the city budgeted for this, um, product, and like I said, it benefits a lot of different city functions. So the costs of it could be spread out amongst different city departments. But I'm proposing that planning, development, and permitting specifically pay for fifty percent of it, which would be thirty-six hundred dollars a year. Um, I estimate that we serve around an average of three hundred permits, certificates of compliance, and, um, hearing notices every year. So thirty-six hundred, three hundred, that would be, um, a twelve dollar records management charge that we would charge to, um, build up the, uh, permitting piece of covering the cost of that software program.
Any questions for Chip?
Just, uh, I know back after probably March, April timeframe, a lot of the documents were being scanned. Has that process been completed, is that?
In clerk's office?
In clerk's office, yeah.
Can you speak to that, Tim?
Yeah, that's all, that's all been completed. The, the challenge now is, um.
Cataloging.
Cataloging and working with the vendor to figure out pricing for online access. But that's all been completed.
If I might add, that project was land records, um, but what we haven't digitized yet in that same way are Lister cards, other assessing records, all the permitting records, um, and bringing in more from the rental registry and building inspections as well.
Is that a discussion that's ongoing, that's, uh, doing that?
That, that would, that could be accomplished with the program that we're, that we're, um, acquiring Citizen Serve.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there something to make a motion?
And will we approve the first reading of the proposed changes to the permitting fees?
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Marie. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye. In the opposition? Motion passes. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Move to approve warrants nine, twenty-four, eighteen.
Second.
Motion to approve warrants by Chad and Jim. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? No.
Move to approve warrants ten, five, eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by James, approve warrants. Any questions? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Motion passes. Number nine, consider approval of minute meaning from nine, ten, eighteen.
So.
Second.
Motion by Chad to accept minutes, uh, second by James. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any others? Motion passes. On the mayor's report, um, your packet, you had a letter that I just asked Fount to slide in there, and that was the, uh, cigarette butt cleanup in and around town and what the, what the outcome of it was. No action is required, just more of an educational piece as to what the impact is. And, um, this, I believe there's four or five days that they did pickups in and around St. Albans city and town, so the.
Almost four thousand bucks.
Yep.
It's amazing.
So just a thank you to all those volunteers, because it was all volunteers who took time out of their day to do that, so, um, you know, it's a, it's an ongoing issue. I would just share that I have, um, I have connected Norm Stanislaus, uh, who is the property manager up at the shopping center, with Amy Brewer, who oversees the, uh, Northwest, uh, Northwestern Hospital Tobacco Prevention Coalition, um, in hopes of, I've, I've received complaints about smoking outside the post office and the Dollar Tree, so hopefully Norm and Amy can get together and have some signs posted there as well. In discussion with Norm, he is more than open to that. He's not the owner, obviously, but he will, uh, advocate for those signs because the maintenance of the cleanup of those cigarette butts on a daily basis is excessive for, for his, uh, his budget and manpower.
You know, I know there's always one person that smokes up there, that's a, um, employee of, um, Rite Aid pharmacy.
Sometimes if they can connect with Amy, I don't know, sometimes Amy, Amy has grant funding to buy the signage, so you don't even have to pay for the signage.
So there is no signage out, uh, covering the, uh, E C cigarettes and all that stuff, so it's not just smoking cigarettes. Um, I don't have a whole lot more to offer, other than, um, Chad and I and Tim Hawkins did go up and, uh, with thanks to Marty for giving us a tour of Ninety-Nine High, um, we'll be taking next steps and meeting with Dom and trying to come up with, uh, a plan on how we want to move forward with that property. I think all of us were pretty much in consensus that it's, it's, it could be a beautiful building, and it's, um, it's something that, if possible, we'd like to keep, but we'll have those discussions and move forward, uh, over the next few months. Do you want to share anything with Dom or Marty on that? I think Marty and I worked together to, um, put together some, um, marketing, RFP notice type materials and try to, uh, see if we can attract somebody who might be interested in doing the redevelopment work, and so, um, we'll circle back along the lead of the council, um, certainly when we get those in, but, uh, if we have a chance before anything goes out, just to make sure you're on the right, right path.
Is there, um, to make that property more marketable, I didn't bring this up, but I thought about it the other day, um, is there the opportunity to add like, um, maybe like a one car garage with an apartment over it also on that property? So that if you had to do two units in the house itself, which is really what it can support, and then have another one making it more attractive to a buyer above the garage? I just didn't know if we were allowed.
Certainly room to book a garage there, and then it's a matter of permitting.
Permitting.
And what the council's direction is.
Okay. What's that? Having a garage or something with another, with another unit above it, just because if it has more units, it's more attractive to somebody, because they're more able to get their money out of it.
And so that would be one of the issues for the council, you know, is how many units, uh, and what configuration do we want to put there, you know?
I thi, I think if you have, if the building is cleaned up and it looks really nice, it, it would be a really marketable property for someone looking for, you know, higher, you know, someone like that's starting at Myland or, or, you know, something like a higher level renter is what I think at that point, because for the money they're gonna need to put into that, they're gonna have to get quite a bit for rent.
Yeah.
If they have it.
Or it's owner occupied.
Or it's owner owned.
You know, I think, um, and that, when I walk through, that's the, the vision that comes to me is owner occupied with somebody that has a need for ancillary use, whether it's a relative or a business or a.
I mean, downstairs, it could be beautiful.
Yeah.
I won't say it is beautiful, but it could be.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on that? We'll go around the table. James, you have anything to share? Marie?
Just got a complaint today, this afternoon, about, um, incident on Spru Street where somebody was mowing their lawn and somebody was on the other side of the fence, the B B gun, waiting at the person mowing their lawn. So they were in Osse's parking area, I guess, shooting B Bs over the fence. I tried to call the lady, but I couldn't get through on her phone. Line was busy, so I will follow up with it, but I don't know if anybody called the police about it or not, but Osse seems to be kind of a gathering point for a lot of problems.
He's usually pretty good about keeping people out of there that don't belong.
Osse, yeah.
Yeah.
He's always about it, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what the follow-up was from that incident, if they, somebody did call the police and let them know that.
Check and let you know.
Okay. She, she was curious as to whether their security cameras may be able to, um, zoom in on that. It happened, I guess, Friday between three and four.
Chip? Are you set, Marie?
I'm all set, thank you.
Um, the only thing I have is every year we talk about, like, I hear also in the community about how, you know, hey, you guys are really good about advertising budget, and you do a lot of budget meetings, and I know the school does them, but I'm just not sure a hundred percent people know when the school board meeting is, and we've always talked about having the school come in here and give us a discussion about what's happening, what they're projecting for a budget, you know, what their budget increase may look like. I'm just wondering if there's still that option, maybe we could have Jim Farr come in, and now that it's all consolidated, we can get them basically all, we can get the F A, the city school all in shot, maybe some projects they're doing in each of the facilities. They're really good about hitting up parents of kids that go to those schools, but I think that they're missing out on everyone else that, like, you know, my parents have no idea what's going on in any of the schools, and yet, you know, they cast two votes for a budget. So maybe have Jim come in and just talk about some of the upgrades and things that they're doing, maybe Joan and, um, you know, Moscow can come in and talk about some of the stuff going on. That's it.
I, I think you make a good point, Chad. I think, because we, our budget, I think we get critiqued a lot, um, and a lot of people don't always do that separation of the two, to see what the impacts of one versus the other are. I think that's an education process that we maybe do a little better than that when it comes to the budget vote, for sure. Kate's happy, she's got her sidewalk, so.
Yeah. Much appreciated.
Are they doing the curb this year or is that next year?
I think that's next year.
Next year is the curb?
Yeah. Um, I also just wanted to say we went to the Glow Run on Saturday, and that was another great event by the rec department. They do such great work, that was fun. Um, and also I thought it was really neat that, that the Soulmates Film Production Crew was here in the city on Saturday, uh, shooting at city school and here, and then at the hospital as well. That was really neat for the city to have in our area.
Just to dovetail on that, um, I meant to ask Liz what kind of, um, money was spent in the community between catering hotels and, and so.
Good question.
Once we touch base with Liz on that, um, we'll, we'll share that, so we know what the impacts are moving forward.
And from the hospital perspective, the production crew made a donation to the Jim Bashaw Fund.
Was it this one?
Yeah, it's nice, so.
Things are good up in Ward 4. I had a really great interaction with a couple who was in from out of town, um, and as I was kind of walking into the, the building, um, I can't remember what I was doing that day, I had to go see Kristen about something, uh, for the room rental, but they, uh, they kind of followed me in and were like, what, what's the deal with this building? And they wanted, and they had all these questions, and they were kind of going around from town to town and looking at historic Vermont, uh, places as tourists, and, um, it would be really great if there was like a one pager or a little booklet that talked about the renovation that we did, something that we might be able to share with people, or even if it was like a poster or something up on the wall, or something on our website. Like, I, in the moment, couldn't answer any of their questions or direct them to anything, and I'm like, we did all of this work, it would be great if there was some document that would allow people who were interested in what we've done here at this building to learn more about it, and maybe there is one already, but.
I think that's a good idea. I'd share that I had brought people in from New Hampshire that were looking at the building as well, and, uh, I've seen other people outside looking at it.
They were incredibly impressed with everything that we'd done in town. They, you know, had lunch and had been here for a while, and, um, but they just, you know, they were. they were looking around the building and I kind of gave them what little tour that I could with the information that I knew, but, yeah, that this, this building itself now is kind of of interest to people who are interested in historic preservation buildings and...
People come up on Church Street where there are a lot of historic buildings. They own the congregation on Church, our building, they've been in ours, amongst our courtroom. It might behoove us to, at some point, maybe come up with a pamphlet or a little, a little booklet of our historic buildings in town.
Maybe that's something Alex, at least...
Say it, say it.
I know that would generate a lot of interest.
The railroad building.
I mean, there's just a lot of them.
Along that same line, I thought you were going to go with a sign-in book that maybe we could have here to see where people coming from and visiting. I shared my...
Good idea, too.
I shared my mayor stuff today, which was a couple parked in the parking garage, I was leaving. They had loaded their bikes, they were going out to ride the rail trail. They were staying at the hotel for two days, they were from California. Their trip was, they're hitting all six states in New England to do, go biking. And the comment they made was, St. Almond is one of the nicest communities that they've been in on this trip. That was one, over the weekend, a friend of mine's sister-in-law and brother, a friend, where he was there from the community, from Labrador. He worked for that community or a community and he was told and pressed with what has happened on the downtown stretch as well. So, personally, I enjoyed hearing all that and keeping that going, so. Chad had one more.
So, Kate's, Kate's little comment about Herr Street reminded me. I was driving up Rayner Street to meet Marty and Tim at 99 High and the asphalt curves in front of Tim's house, they look like crap compared to the rest of the city. If we got money left over, if we can carve out a little bit, I think that street would look, would look great with good concrete curves, especially as you're going north, you can look right up that street. It's just noticeably different than all the others.
And I would, I would attest that those comments were not initiated by Tim. Appreciated by Chad. Tim didn't have him in the corner pushing his butt. This is Chad's initiative.
I, I don't disagree with you. I think it, the larger conversation is as we get into the final third of the existing bond, what are our priorities? Maybe we can touch about some of that, you know, during the retreat. I don't think we're, there's going to be a shortfall. We don't yet have it quantified yet and I'm not sure we're necessarily ready to make that decision until we get through year three, you know? But, I, I agree with the assessment. I think throughout the project, we've gone above and beyond to kind of do it the St. Almond city way and I think that's why it's been a successful project. But that's also why we're going to be running a little bit light on the back end, I think.
Just to that point, I, Dom and I talked about, we have failed in trying to come to a consensus on our goals and strategies meeting. It's been very difficult to find that time. So what we're hoping to do, depending on the agenda for November, is try to have a quick and fast agenda and then move upstairs for a couple hours since everyone's here on a Monday night anyway. If we can go from 7:30 to 9:30 and have that discussion, I'll save that kind of...
Perhaps if some, if some of us have goals or again is what we're thinking of in the meantime, to maybe send them to you so you have at least a baseline to start with and might speed it up a little bit.
Where you, where you have issues addressed and we can have a, we can handle this, so. Any other business, anyone? Marty, you good? Chip? Chip, board?
It was a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Michael, sorry. By James, James? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for the new changes.